Good evening. Welcome to Montpelier Civic Forum. And we're going to be discussing city council tonight as we do the March up to March's Town Meeting Day. And I've got a special one tonight. Normally, I do just people individually. And I already did District 1 individually because we have an open seat. But I thought it would be more interesting to do Districts 2 and 3 together where we have two incumbent council people. And we could dig a little bit deeper because both of them have the experience of sitting in council. And barring any sort of massive write-in, will be retained on the next city council, I hope. To my extreme left, so to speak, is Jack McCullough. And sitting to my lesser left is Ashley Hill. District 3, District 2, how you guys doing tonight?
Doing great. Thanks for having us.
Living the dream.
Living the dream of having a job that pays very little, puts you in all kinds of meetings, has you in other organizations, sitting as the token person. Jack, which boards do you sit on?
The...I'm sitting on a couple right now. I'm the city council representative to the Housing Task Force, which is a natural thing for me because I served on the Housing Task Force and chaired the Housing Task Force for many, many years. And I'm also on the ADA Committee, which...
ADA being?
Americans with Disability Act. And we're...the city has really made a big commitment to bring all the city facilities into compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. We just, within the last year, hired a consultant to study all our facilities. And we got a report from them. And the next step, of course, is figuring out how to fund all the changes that need to be done.
Ashley, what are you on?
So I am currently the council rep for the Community Justice Center here in Montpelier. And I know the CJC has worked really hard over the last year to put together some additional grant requests to do some more programming in terms of offering communities of support for individuals and families who are struggling here in town. And we do also serve a number of other municipalities as sort of part of our work as a hub here in Washington County. And I also started, worked with the council to put together the Social and Economic Justice Committee. So I serve as the council representative on that committee as well. And we just got our charter, for lack of a better word, approved by the council.
What is the charge of that committee?
So it's...I couldn't quote...I couldn't quote it from memory. But it's really a committee that I pushed hard to form with the council. And this council is very receptive to that. To really start breaking down some of the structural oppression that people of color and other folks who are not often able to be present in the room for a myriad of reasons, to really make sure that every voice is represented in the work that we're doing here in city government in Montpelier. You know, politics is a bit of a luxury to have the privilege and the ability to serve. And I want to be mindful that, you know, those of us who have the ability and the resources to be on the council, you know, that takes away time from family and that takes away time from work. And I really want to make sure that our decision-making is informed from all perspectives and not just those who can show up and speak at meetings, but making sure that, you know, we have committees who are keeping up on the work that the council is doing and thinking about, you know, consequences, unintended consequences, impact in ways other than just a budget or, you know, a sort of very literal public policy response or issue.
Communications. Every year, after the election, the city council will gather together and they'll do a mission retreat.
Yes.
And they'll set a set of goals that will shape that year's council agenda, basically. And every year, communications comes up, doesn't it?
Yes, indeed.
It...well, I think it does. You know, I've only been to one of these so far. But yes, it's an important, important thing. You know, how do we get information out to the public? How do we get communication input from the public? And the city has done some big things that are happening or in the process of happening so that people can go to the city's webpage. We've got this system called Invisio that enables us to see the status of a bunch of the initiatives that the city's working on. Now, I have to tell you, I don't know how a resident would go to the city's webpage to find it, but I believe that that's part of it to enable people to see what's going on.
Well, I know they're working on metrics on that. Anna had spoken about that. And the idea that the city can kind of grab a handle, first on the simples like demographics and things like that, but down the line, you'll actually be able to see much more of what the city is doing in Invisio. I think that's the purpose behind having it.
Yeah, just a couple of last meeting or maybe two meetings ago, we had a discussion of what measures we were going to look at for this matrix of community performance.
As a city study, yeah. It's in essence, sort of like a census for...it's a Montpelier census.
Yeah, I believe also, if, again, you guys know, I don't, but I believe we're doing a survey, a community survey of some sort. Could you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so I think one of the things, you know, as Montpelier sort of looks forward and starts to plan, we have some big projects in the works in terms of housing, you know, growing the number of units that we have here in town. You know, one of the things that the city, I think, has really been sort of trying to figure out is who do we want to be going forward? And so Mayor Watson actually came to the council with a list of indicators, you know, and it's still a fluid list. We're still working on that. But really, what we're hoping is, you know, for folks who are interested or, you know, who may have an opportunity arise to be here in Montpelier, to live here, to work here, you know, to raise a family here, you know, we really wanted one place where people could go to find that information. And so the city survey will really sort of do that. It'll give, the survey that went out will give us part of that information. And then we've identified partners in the area who also collect data in terms of health and wellness and a myriad of other issues that we're hoping to sort of put all together into a very digestible, consumable data document for anybody who's interested or anyone who has questions or wants to know more about our area. They'll be able to come and check that out. It should be up on the city website once it's all been done and...
But then the other thing that I'll mention is that when we were putting together the budget, Bill Fraser, the city manager, said that what he would like to do is have some money in the budget so we can actually do a survey of the population, send out questions, see what do they like and not like about the city? What would they like? Where would they like to see us go? And so the plan is to do one and then maybe, you know, over the next few years, build up enough of a fund to do another one. So it's not something we do every year, but over time, we'll get a picture of...
We'll have a benchmark.
What people want and what, how they think the city is doing.
Which brings us, of course, when we're talking about things that we need, to the question of affordability in this town.
Yes.
Jack, you've worked for years in housing. You've worked on the Housing Task Force. Is Montpelier getting less affordable? And if it does seem less affordable, is that creating a more, a less inclusive Montpelier simply because it's not as affordable?
Yes and yes. I can tell you that very easily. When I moved to the Montpelier in 1983, on a legal aid lawyer's salary, I was able to buy a house for $35,000, which was about twice my salary at that time. There is no way you could do that now. We know that people who work in the service sector, even professional sectors, are having a hard time buying houses. And we know that rent is very, very high. We have a rental vacancy rate that's almost zero, where to have a healthy rental market, it should be in the neighborhood of 5% to 6%. And rents of newly developed market rate housing are up in the, coming close to $2,000 a month. I haven't seen any $2,000, but I've certainly heard of rents 1,700, 1,750 a month. And so that's a serious problem. It's not the kind of city that I think we want.
Is there anything...let me back that off. Is this a Vermont issue? Is this a national issue? What kind of issue are we addressing or is it a localized issue to Montpelier?
I think it's really playing out everywhere right now. I mean, there's been data for years about, you know, how many hours of minimum wage work it would take to live in any city. We'll just, we'll take a national level to start. I mean, the data has been clear for years. I think, I remember seeing it in 2012 when I was still in law school. And you would have to, in essence, work two full-time, minimum wage jobs to simply provide the bare necessities in Boston at that time. And that's not even San Francisco or New York City or, you know, any other larger cities. And Montpelier isn't immune to that. You know, I think I'm still the only renter on the council.
I believe so.
And, you know, when I first moved to Montpelier, it took a long time to find an apartment. And, you know, it was a rough apartment at that, you know. There, it was a great location, but it needed a lot of work. It was an older house. And in terms of weatherization, that, you know, that was not something that had been prioritized. And so my roommate at the time and I, in essence, lived in two rooms for the winter because we couldn't afford to heat the place. And so, you know, I am very attuned to what that rental market looks like. And it is very, very difficult right now for renters. And, you know, I think the sort of, the push to buy houses is something that myself, for sure, and a number of my peers, you know, aren't really in a place in life where we can entertain that. You know, $35,000, I spent double that for a year of law school. And I'll be paying those student loans off.
Right, I was just about to say that.
It's basically a mortgage forever. You know, that's a mortgage that only dies when you die. So, you know, I think that there is a very different, you know, world out there for, you know, people my age and even, I would say, you know, people in their mid-40s and 50s. And, you know, particularly when you get on up to folks who are relying on, you know, social security or any sort of fixed income program, there are not a lot of options in this town. And the hard part is when you, when you are living on a very fixed income, you need access to food and transportation. And the only places where you can find affordable rents that sort of will work with your very tight budget are not in places that offer those sort of services. And I have...go ahead.
So we're working on that. You know, we've, as anyone who's been around Montpelier knows, just within the last couple of years, five years, whatever, we've seen some great developments in the housing market. We have the conversion of the upstairs of 56 Barry Street where the senior center is to apartments. We've...
There are other apartments further down Barry Street.
Yes.
Yes. There's new housing down there. Yep. We have the French block, after being vacant for 80 years, now occupied by tenants who would have had difficulty affording somewhere else. We've got One Taylor Street, which is the transit center with 30 apartments upstairs that's in construction now. There's talk of a housing project to be developed by the Episcopal Church. Unclear whether that's going to happen. And I can tell you, one thing that we have on the city council agenda meeting for next week is a proposal that we heard about at the Housing Task Force last night to fund development of accessory dwelling units.
What is that?
Enabling someone to either build a freestanding structure or divide their house into, add an apartment to their home. And the city is being asked to submit a community development application to move forward with this. It's going to be on a pilot, pilot study, working with the Vermont State Housing Authority. And it's a great opportunity to see, well, what can we do with people my age and older who are living in big houses and they don't need all the space in those big houses? And so what can they do to enable other people to live in those houses, take off some of the burden of being in a 3,000-square-foot house that you don't need and generate some income?
Jack, are there any infill spaces left in this town, in core Montpelier, that you could actually construct a house in if you wished?
It's pretty limited. We, the city Community Development Office studied that, I'm thinking maybe 10 years or so ago. And the, it's pretty limited.
What about, now, this is again, opening up a can of worms that's been for 15 years. What about Saban's pasture? And what about Ellen Goldman's land off on Terra Street? Is there any movement whatsoever on those?
You know, I would say, I would say that the city is open to hearing, you know, thoughts and plans. I'm not aware of anything that's, you know, sort of a done deal. I think the important thing to remember is that those are privately owned properties. And so, you know, we've had a good working relationship over the years in terms of...
But still, the profitability depends on zoning.
Right, which I think, I think, you know, we addressed that. We were very mindful when we did the zoning rewrite, the last go-around. And I know that there were some issues that are still outstanding. We've been, meaning, we've had them on the agenda a few times, but weather has prohibited Mike from being able to join us. And it's not really a conversation we can have without him. So I know that there are a few requests to change things that I think have pretty much unanimous support, is my understanding, in terms of just some minor tweaks to make to certain zones and particular requirements that I'm fairly confident the council is very open to hearing. But in terms of development in the works, I'm not aware of any, but I know it's an ongoing conversation and has been for a long time.
Yeah, you make a good point. And certainly, in working with the Housing Task Force for many years, we've pushed to make it possible to have development on Saban's pasture. And that is included in the zoning ordinance we passed to enable that to happen. It's within the TIF district, I believe, and we, and it's actually...
Could you explain what a TIF district is, please?
I can try. The basic concept, TIF stands for Tax Increment Financing. And the concept is that you have an area where the city thinks is ripe for development. And if a parcel is developed within the TIF district, the, it requires, and it requires city infrastructure to make it happen. Sewers, roads, water service, that kind of thing. The taxes that are generated by that property above the previous value of the assessed value of the property go to paying for the cost of those infrastructure improvements that are needed to make the development work.
And that's what's playing...
So that's the tax increment.
...in the downtown discussion of the parking garage.
Yes.
Yeah, part of it, yeah. But what I was going to say with, because it's staying on Saban's pasture for just a moment, you know, we're, part of it is owned by the Vermont College of Fine Arts. I know they're interested in doing some development. We know that we have an economic development plan that was developed a couple of years ago. And housing is one of the most important parts of that because the lack of housing that people can move to was a real impediment to do economic development. Now we have the multi-user path going by that area. It's, I think the time is ripe to start working on it. It was actually looking at trying to encourage housing on Saban's pasture was one of the things that was part of our priorities that grew out of our city council retreat last year. And I'm sure it's going to be, continue to be high on our list.
In terms of housing, when we talk about development in our town, it goes beyond that. The Montpelier Economic Development Corporation, what is that? And how did that come about? And what is their relationship to things like Saban's pasture?
Yeah, so the MDC is a relatively new creation here in town. It's been, I want to say, three years?
Three years.
Three years. And what the MDC really focuses on doing is cultivating those sort of relationships that it takes to bring businesses to Montpelier. You know, I don't think I've been shy over, you know, the last two years on the council in terms of how Montpelier handles taxes on businesses. But I think that the MDC really serves a very important function in terms of reaching out to businesses who, you know, we know are looking for places or, you know, looking for space or looking to move. And really sort of trying to assess what their needs are, looking to see how Montpelier can meet those needs. And really be a liaison, I think, between the business community and the city while also working, you know, with Montpelier Alive to make sure that residents are sort of factored into that equation as well.
So the distillery would be one example of that?
It would be, yeah.
The distillery out on Barry Street?
Down on Barry Street, yeah. The Calidonia Spirits.
Yep, yeah. You know, I think, and I've felt this way for a long time, and I've been the persistent no vote on every request to abate taxes for businesses because I...
Why?
Well, it's a multifaceted reason. I'm not, I'm not opposed to businesses coming here. I welcome businesses coming here. But I think that there are better ways for the city to incentivize relocating to Montpelier than by, you know, to use a bit of a flippant term, corporate welfare. You know, we all work hard here in Montpelier and we all pay our fair share in taxes. And I think that every entity that utilizes resources and infrastructure and benefits from being here really needs to contribute their share. And I know that the argument is, well, they bring people here, they contribute in other ways. But, you know, when residents are going to get their tax bill or, you know, when rent is going to go up, when your lease renews because property taxes have gone up, I think it's incumbent upon us as the fiduciary, you know, those who are in a position of fiduciary responsibility to the city and to our community to ensure that everyone who's benefiting from those services is also contributing to make sure that they continue to function. I do think that the city does a lot of great work in terms of supporting infrastructure development so that businesses can come. I know with Calidonia Spirits, the city put up and is still in the process of completing some of the work that needs to be done in terms of infrastructure to really get Calidonia Spirits to, you know, to opening. But I really, I struggle with the notion, you know, that residents' property taxes are going to go up, but yet businesses who may or may not have a plan, you know, one of the tax abatements that was granted was to allow a business to rebuild, a contractor to rebuild. And I appreciate the significance of that because it's going to create new office space. But there was no definite tenant in mind, you know, and certainly it wasn't the full tax abatement. But nonetheless, you know, businesses tend to have more access to resources than residents do in terms of, you know, the long-term cost of being here. And I feel pretty strongly that, you know, as someone who works really hard to be able to afford to live here, and I know that my friends and my neighbors do, they work equally as hard to be able to afford to be here. And it really grinds my gears sometimes to think that, you know, there are people who are relying on the things that all of us are paying for but that aren't contributing in the same economic way that the rest of us are expected to.
You are the persistent no vote.
I am.
Jack, you're a yes vote.
Sometimes yes, sometimes no.
Can you explain the sometimes yes?
I think we've, I think, since I've been on the council, I think we've had two tax stabilization requests. And one of them was this office building proposal that came before us that I thought the developer made a good case that he came within the criteria set forth in the policy. The no vote, and it's long enough ago that I don't remember all the details. But the no vote was the Timber Homes Company that's the new place out Elm Street. And one of the criteria for granting tax stabilization is a determination that this wouldn't happen but for the tax stabilization. And the company came to us and they were very forthright that they love the city of Montpelier, they really wanted to move there, their employees wanted to be here, and they were going to be here doing the project and bringing their business to the town, whether we gave them the tax stabilization agreement or not.
That's brutal.
And so I think it's great that they're going to be here. I think they're going to be a good asset to the city. But based on that, I just didn't see how we could justify giving them the stabilization.
Let me twist this.
And one other thing about that is that, another thing we have on our agenda is to look at the tax stabilization policy to see how we can refine it to make it more, do more of what we want.
Let me talk about the TIF district and ask a little bit about that. If our core downtown, a lot of our core downtown is in the TIF district, then the improvements that are made in that downtown will not go into the general fund, they'll go into the TIF fund, from what I gather, to pay for infrastructure in that neighborhood. Doesn't that put more stress on residents who are paying taxes if a major portion of our downtown, its future is already locked away in a TIF?
So, it's a very technical question. And I, TIF, it's a really complex, I don't even really know what to describe it as. It's sort of this, this plan that was hatched as a means to spark economic development, but also sort of allow cities a bit of breathing room, if you will, to be able to support and sustain that infrastructure. And, you know, I was reading the newspapers, it was many months ago before my grandfather had passed away, and there was a brilliant article written in the paper in the town I grew up in about TIF districts. And they've been talking a lot about this. And there was actually a TIF district one town over from where I grew up that failed. And there was a really great breakdown in the paper about sort of what a TIF district means. And it does take city resources, but it uses them in a very different way. And so my understanding, albeit it's, I'm sure it's an oversimplification, is that it doesn't mean that upfront, the additional tax burden would fall on the taxpayers. The caveat is, to me, that if for some reason the economic upstart doesn't generate the revenues projected, that I see no other place for that burden to fall but on the taxpayers. And, you know, I don't, I don't understand the inner workings of sort of the way that the, that the taxes are allocated or, you know, any of that. But what I do know is that the goal is that those investments from the city will in fact be made up for with any revenue generation to the grand list. And that in theory, at some point in the future, and admittedly, it is not the short-term future, it is the very long-term future, that that grand list growth will then... future, it is the very long-term future, that grand list growth will then go back to the city once the debts and obligations have been satisfied, that the city accrued as a result of its infrastructure investments.
And I can answer the question in a couple of different ways. I agree with everything that Ashley said. One is that the payment, the TIF district does not drain money or reduce the revenue that's already coming to the city. So it's not causing people's taxes to go up. The crucial factor that we heard from our consultants who were preparing the TIF district, and as we were being called on to vote on it, was that if you throw a bunch of money at projects under the theory that if you build it, they will come, that's a recipe for failure. And that might have been what happened in the town that you're talking about. If you have...
Are you talking about Newport as well?
No, no, I grew up in, on the New Hampshire Seacoast with my grandparents, and so I grew up in Dover, and this was in Rochester.
Right, but I'm saying Newport, that was exactly what happened.
Right.
Well, there was also fraud to an extreme degree. But the idea of just, like, sending a mile's worth of water in sewer lines, hoping that someone will come along and build at the end of those lines, that would be a foolish investment. If we had, the only time we would ever actually go forward and say, yes, we're going to make this investment within the TIF district, is if we had a developer already there, ready to go and proceed with their development. And, of course, it is true that it's a city bond, where we'd be, the voters have to vote on it, and once they vote on it, they're committing to pay the bond even if the revenues aren't there from the development. But prudence dictates that you do the, you make sure, you do the develop, you know the development's there before you put the infrastructure in the ground.
Infrastructure in the ground is a good place to start into three water breaks, water main breaks within a matter of a month.
I think it, wasn't it more like?
Two weeks.
Five or six in a month?
It could have been.
It was significant. I know there was a council hearing on that.
Yes.
Can you talk to the public tonight about the state of water and sewer in this city and whether there's a possible crisis underneath the streets?
So, I don't know that the word, I would use the word crisis. I do agree that we have a significant amount of work ahead of us. You know, I know how hard DPW is working to deal with these as they're coming up. We also were presented, and I believe it's all available on the city website now, I think we got it at the meeting really, or emailed just before. But DPW put together a very comprehensive explanation, along with some data about the number of breaks, both over the last few years and very recent. And, you know, the reality of the situation is that our infrastructure is aging significantly, and with the drastic temperature increase and drops, that's causing things to...
Well, there's one more, there's one more reality. The one that was most visible was the one on Saturday downtown.
Downtown was flooded.
And from what I gather from Ann, it was the fact that it was so slushy that the storm sewers were jammed up. So had the storm sewers not been jammed up, we wouldn't have had a flood downtown. That was circumstantial in a sense, but it was still a break, a significant break.
Right, and one of the things that's kind of surprising is that it's not necessarily the oldest pipes that have failed. You know, the, out on Elm Street, it was pipes from the 1970s, which, believe it or not, are not the oldest water mains in the city.
Still pretty old.
Still pretty old. And what the presentation we had from the Public Works Director was that there was a period where the city was making water main, using these water mains, I think it's called high ductile steel.
Where they used to be cast iron.
Right, they used to be cast iron, then they went to this high ductile steel. And the issue is that there, it's prone to corrosion in the clay soils that we have in Montpelier. So, it's a problem where, it seemed like it came all at once this last month. We didn't really have, we're not above the ongoing norm. We're all, we always have some water main leaks, and the city has to respond to them as we can.
Macabre.
Well, sort of, but...
We can't anticipate where these are going to happen.
We don't know where they're going to happen, but we also have a capital improvement plan to address it by replacing water mains on a schedule based on the best judgment of where they need to be replaced. You don't necessarily get there before there's a leak, but it's not, we are not, and people should understand that we're not spending so much money on fixing water main breaks that we don't have enough money to do the ongoing maintenance and replacement.
Now, I hope that I'm not going to misspeak on this. I believe that you were in council when we started to put aside money to get to stable maintenance on the streets.
I think that it had been put in place the year before, and so I want to say, I think the first budget cycle that I went through was really the first time where there were allocated dedicated funds to...
I think it's $500,000.
That is, that is over time, that is the plan. And I had raised this issue at council, at the council meeting, I had actually asked that the issue be on the agenda because I received so many notes from residents sort of about, like, what does this mean, what is the city doing to respond to this? You know, one of the things, and I think Tom has raised this a number of times.
Tom being?
Tom McArdle.
City from our...
A DPW director. He, we toured the water treatment plant, not the Water Resource Recovery Plant, but up on the hill where all of our drinking water is processed. And one of the challenges that Tom talked about, and I think it even came up this go around with one of the recent water main breaks, was that a lot of the mains were laid before people really started keeping track of where the mains ran and what was attached to what. And so sometimes, you've got DPW folks out there just trying to ascertain even where the break is because they might not have a complete map.
That was Northfield Street.
Right, because those pipes were laid back in the early 1920s, I think is when some of them date back to. And so, a lot of records were lost over time, and so you've got folks out there on days where it is well below freezing, actually walked into town the morning, we had the major break in downtown. And part of it was the storm drains, but the other part was, it was cold.
Oh, way cold.
And it, I mean, it started to freeze within minutes, and just sort of keeping up with that, plus you've got more water flowing in, and so I think, you know, it's, there's a lot of moving parts to it. It's a very significant part of the work we need to do.
Might this be a significant new expense coming in the following years that we're really not going to get federal money for because every city in town has this problem?
Right. I mean, I don't know, I don't know that I'd be comfortable even sort of betting on federal money of any sort of significance, given the sort of uncertainty that we're experiencing with the federal government alone. You know, I do, I know that the city has a plan. I raise some concern about the sort of timeframe for that plan, understanding that there is significant planning that has to go into this. We saw that with the Northfield Street project, that had been in the works for a long while, getting contractors, making sure that all of the materials are in place and that, you know, residents, that we've communicated effectively to residents what will happen. But, you know, emergencies happen, and I think that that's one of the things that we need to start being more mindful of as we plan and budget because, you know, two major water main breaks like that in downtown Montpelier, there were a couple of businesses closed for days. And so that impacts not only, obviously, their interests, but that also really impacts our small city that hosts up to 20,000 people, I think, on any given day. And, you know, that's a significant expense.
But another way to answer, to look at it is that for some of the major, big projects that we're talking about, where there's a big water main that needs work, it's likely to be done as part of a major highway project. And a lot of our main, some of our main roads are eligible for state and federal transportation matches, and so it makes sense to do that all at once. You know, you're doing the road, you're doing the water mains.
Well, that was Elm Street, and that was Northfield in theory.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. Now, I live next to Harrison, which isn't federally funded, and that one took a long time, simply because the, to amplify on your point, the pipe was going like this, then all of a sudden the pipe zigzagged across the street and went like that. No one knew that that would ever be the case.
Right.
Yep.
So one has to wonder how many Harrison Streets there are sitting in this town.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, it is a significant, I think it's a significant amount of work that's going to have to go into planning that. And, you know, living on East State, you know, we've had a few of those major breaks where I was walking up the hill one afternoon over the summer, and all of a sudden there is literally water just shooting out of the middle of the street. I've never seen anything like it before. And, you know, those are, those are the things where, you know, I think Bill and Sue and city staff have responded very quickly, very efficiently. You know, all of that information was on Facebook as soon as, you know, within minutes, really. But in terms of planning for that, I'm a little concerned that, you know, some of the more major arteries into town, you know, those aren't, those aren't planned to be redone for a couple more years, and some of those areas have experienced significant outages as a result of the recent happenings.
When we're boiling water, that's significant.
It is.
Oh, it definitely is. Ashley mentioned the city water treatment plant. I'll just say, if anyone, if you or anyone else has the opportunity to go out there and tour the plant, it is well worth it.
It was very, I learned a lot.
The operator of our, of our city water plant is incredibly competent and committed, dedicated to the work, and that's really true across the board of the, one of the things that I had a chance to do in, early on in my year on the council so far, is to visit a whole bunch of city facilities, the Public Works Garage, the cemetery, the water department, and the fire department, and across the board, we have great people working for the city who are dedicated to providing great service for our residents. And I just can never say enough of how dedicated and competent our employees are.
We're at our debt limit right now. City council sets a certain target for municipal debt, and we've reached that limit at this point of where past councils felt comfortable in their borrowing. What's your thinking on a recreation center? Because that would really extend that deficit significantly. Are there numbers that are being thrown around?
We received some preliminary numbers at our, at our last meeting when we went through the presentation with the consultant firm that we had brought on to sort of do the investigatory study on this. To me, those are the kinds of projects that government is built to invest in. I really believe that rec centers, and as a kid who grew up, you know, that's where I went to summer camp because they had scholarships for low-income families, and, you know, that was, that was the option, that's where you went. And to me, those investments, those sort of infrastructure investments, and I don't see those as just infrastructure investments, I think those are social investments as well. I think that those are the places where we need to invest, and I...
Is that a $500,000 investment? Is that a million-dollar investment?
It's upwards, keep going, yeah.
It depends on what we're looking at. One of the things that our consultants did was look at a range of options from basically fixing up the rec center to where it can be used. ADA standards. ADA standards and...
And full functionality.
Full functionality, to bringing the second floor back, able to be used for various activities.
As well as the basement.
Is all the way up to the idea of an indoor pool and which other people have talked about. And there's a tremendous range from like a million to $2 million, up to 25 million.
25 million would represent twice the city budget. Has anyone mentioned that?
Well, one of the, part of this report was a survey of Montpelier residents, and when, when people got to the point of saying, well, you know, putting in an indoor pool would cost, you know, $350 or $400 increase on the median property tax bill, there was not a lot of support for that.
Well, and I would also, I mean, there, you know, there's still an increase. I think no matter how we cut it, there would be some assumption of debt in order to either, one, retrofit the existing Berry Street facility or, you know, purchasing a new facility and working with that. You know, I don't think there was any support on the council for a $25 million bond. There was, I think there was a lot of support expressed for looking at options in terms of restoring and repairing the Berry Street building, which I don't, I don't think, the numbers came in at between $1 and $4 million.
Something like that.
Something like that, two and five. But a lot of that really depends on what the priorities are for that space. You know, I love the idea of having a pool, but what I see in terms of a property tax increase, you know, billed to a property owner of, you know, $350 to $400, in terms of rental increases, that is significant.
Well, the model that they were using was a recreation center in New Hampshire, where $300 or $400 on the property tax just simply gets the building built. You still have to belong to that building and pay another $200 or $300 for your family. So it seems like those piggybacked figures to actually use it when, don't we have a pool up at First and Fitness that's fairly close by, and we have recreation equipment up at Planet Fitness for $10 a month?
That's all going to be part, oh, go ahead.
Well, I think...
I'm playing devil's advocate.
Right, well, and I think that those are certainly opportunities that are available to some folks, but I'm not interested in building any more opportunities that are only available to some folks. I want to start building opportunity for every single person in our community regardless of their economic situation, regardless of their ability to drive or to find private transportation to get to places. And so to me, really finding a place in town that works.
Boy, is there land sufficient for that?
Well, you know...
Jack was saying that in terms of infill, there really isn't a lot of empty land in town to construct someplace new.
But I don't know that it has to be new construction necessarily. I think that there are ways to partner, for the city to partner with existing places. So we've got this building that is very centrally located, there's kids in and out of there after school every day. You know, I used to live right next door to the rec center, it's busy on the weekends, you know, and that, to me, is really the lifeblood of what Montpelier is to the young people that are here and to frankly, anybody who wants to do those things.
And it's proximate to the other end of the spectrum.
Right, to the senior center, yeah.
Right.
And, you know, so we have options. I don't, I don't see this as we have to bond 25 million and get everything we want, or we have to just stick with the building on Berry Street and invest in that. I really see this as an opportunity for the city to, one, explore public transportation. What is the city going to do? How, if we, as a community, decide that the Berry Street facility isn't where we want to invest, okay, I can respect that, but I want to know what the plan is to make sure that every single person who can access Berry Street is going to be able to access whatever alternative the city comes up with.
Is this a multi-year planning project?
Absolutely, yes, most definitely.
Yeah, we're going to hear, no decisions have been made. The most important thing that people need to understand is no decisions have been made, and we are expecting people to come out and tell us what their views are and what... what they're willing to pay for. You know, because we've, I think we've all heard from the people who want the indoor pool, and those who are in that group are very, very enthusiastic about what they want. But that's one segment of the population. We want to hear from a lot of them.
Well, the survey tells you something.
It certainly does.
I haven't seen the survey, but the survey was a scientific survey, from what I gather.
And it'll be on, if it's not already, it'll be on the city's webpage.
Well, and I think too, though, that one of the important pieces is, you know, we hear from the people who can show up. And those are really important voices to hear from in terms of how we are going to plan our work. But I think we also need to be very proactive about sort of asking. We need to put ourselves out there as city officials and as city government to sort of make sure that, that we're not only hearing from people who are putting themselves out because the work that we do as a city and the services that we offer impact every single person here, whether they can show up to our meetings or whether they, you know, are invited to come out to another thing. But I think there are great opportunities for people who are working in those, you know, working at the rec center, for example, like, hey, why don't, do you mind taking this really quick survey? Or, you know, really getting a feel for the people who are using this space, who might not be the ones who are able to show up at meetings or, or may have a different perception about what the needs are, rather than just inviting those who can come in or choose to come in to share their perspective.
You know, Ashley, you just mentioned something that I think is very important. It's a limited segment of the population who actually come out to meetings and talk to us about what they want. One of the things that we put in the budget this year for the first time was some funding for childcare, people who come to city council meetings or public meetings. And it's, we'll see how it, how it goes.
But it's a recognition of...
Absolutely.
That there are, you know, if, if you're a single parent and you've got...
There are barriers.
A couple of kids, it makes it harder to get out and be heard at meetings.
I'm going to frame this gently for the elephant in the room of the parking garage. And we waited this long to talk about the parking garage.
We'll call it a behemoth.
Why did we end up with a 13th hour fight? Why did we end up with, after this thing went before the voters, it's still being fought? Was that a fault in the process? Or is that just land policy and regulation in Vermont invites fights?
You know, I'm, everybody knows how I voted on the parking garage.
How did you vote on the parking garage?
I voted no.
Why?
I opposed it. And it's not to say that I oppose the, the creation of a parking garage. I personally, and sort of in my capacity as a representative for a significant number of folks here in Montpelier, felt like this project was not the project that the city needed to shoulder as part of the Tiff District. To me, you know, do we have a need for parking? Absolutely. We absolutely do. But the question to me is bigger than that. And one, I am, I am all about transparency in the decision-making process. And, you know, there were meetings, and the city put, put out the list of meetings that occurred on this topic. I personally would have preferred, you know, starting these meetings and the sort of proposal process much, much sooner. I think the other piece here is that the private entity, so the Capitol Plaza, you know, they're a business. They are not a city entity. They're not subject to open meeting laws and all of those other things that, that government is. And that's one of the things to me that I really struggle with about public-private partnerships is that there's, there is a significant need for transparency in government, but business partners don't share that same requirement. And a change like this in downtown Montpelier is major. It, it will change the way that you see your community. And, you know, one of the things that I think could have been handled better by all of us was the sort of process by which all of a sudden the plans changed and the designs changed. And to me, I want, I want public input on all of those things so that we reach a place, so that we get to a yes by having lots of different opinions at the table and people weighing in.
I want Jack to weigh in because Jack voted yes.
I voted yes. I, to answer your previous question, is this just the nature of land policy in Vermont? I think it largely is. I think we see a lot of circumstances where the decision is made and then all the, it's always subject to challenge. And, you know, that's a healthy part of our democracy that people can challenge decisions that their government is making. I voted yes because in my judgment, and this goes back for many years, I've lived here since 1983, and for that entire time, people have been talking about how important, how much we need more parking in downtown. As recent, as far back as 2015, where we, the city had a study for what was needed for economic development in the center of the city. Top of the list was another hotel and a parking structure, basically right where they're going now. And there are suggestions, well, maybe it should go somewhere else. I don't think those are, were feasible suggestions. So what I see coming out of this is economic development, we'll have people coming into the city and parking their cars in the parking garage and leaving them there and spending their money in the restaurants and stores downtown.
Was there a process question that led up perhaps, as Ashley was indicating, that led to a group of people feeling somewhat excluded?
It's hard for me to say, hard for me to endorse that idea because the, the people who are challenging the decision were not at our meetings saying, I don't think we're going in the right direction, or saying it should be fixed or should be stopped. We didn't hear that except from a pretty small handful of people during the meetings that were, that were held. And there were a lot of meetings. You know, the city's been posting the count of the meetings and public hearings and...
Well, I guess one thing that I, that was not clear to me, and I'm a relatively well-informed member of our community and, and, you know, on the council. You know, I remember when the big ribbon cutting ceremony happened at the Capitol Plaza, and the governor was there, and, you know, the Bishara family spoke about what this would mean for Montpelier. There was no, and I scoured all of the press releases and all of the news coverage. I wasn't able to attend because I had to work, but there was nothing in there that, that said the expectation was that, that the city would be building the parking garage and that the Bishara family would be building the hotel. And, you know, one of the things that I really struggle with is, the city tried. The city in, I think it was 2013, came forward with a plan, you know, saying, we need another hotel here. And the Bisharas lobbied hard against that. And now it's, I think that they announced in 2017 that, you know, that another hotel was coming and that they would own it. And when asked about that, the answer was, well, who better than, than us to own it? And, you know, and I appreciate from a business standpoint, that answer. Because, you know, that's, businesses need to make money to survive and to continue to do what they do. But I also feel like there is a lot of value in, in starting those community conversations at the outset. You know, sort of, okay, the city has decided that this is what we're going to do, and, you know, I'm a litigator by day, so I dig my heels in. And Jack, you're a lawyer, you know how it goes. You know, when you've got your position and, and, you know, you are, you are in your role as an advocate, you know, you figure out a way to, to get to some place and present your case and...
I would never stick you guys with this because you're two lawyers and I'm not. Is it too late for, is it too late for the two sides to mediate something reasonable?
I would, I would love to see some conversations happen. I've engaged in conversations with some of the opponents. I would love to see a way to come out of this so that the parking garage can be built because I think it's going to benefit the city. But if there are suggestions that, that other people have to, to make it more congenial to their view of downtown, I think, I think the council would be open to trying to figure that out.
Well, I would, I really welcome you guys and thank you for being here tonight. Both of you are running on a post, so you don't have to be here talking to me.
I don't know about that. I mean, elections are won and lost by literally one vote.
Exactly. You would know better than that.
You know that personally, yeah.
But I do thank you, and I think we're well represented in both District Two and District Three by having you both on council.
Well, thank you for having us.
I want to say one more thing, and that's get out and vote.
Yes.
You know that all of the races are not contested. There was one thing that I didn't bring up that I want to spend two more minutes, and I'm sorry, it's on me. The charter change.
Yes.
One of the two of you...
Well, which one?
The new one?
The, the one that deals with energy.
Sure.
Would one of you two explain that very quickly? That's on me, sorry.
Yeah. So the proposal on the ballot is language that we would take to the legislature that would allow the city to explore creating energy efficiency standards. I know that there was an article, a piece on CAX where a lot of it sounded as though that was sort of a done deal, but I, this to me is really the beginning of that conversation. This simply gives the city the ability to explore the drafting of ordinances if the legislature approves the charter change. The city is looking for the authority from the voters to request that the legislature accept the proposal to amend the charter. And then what would happen is a long series of community conversations to talk about what those requirements could look like, how they should be structured, if we should even structure them. I think that maybe...
It opens the conversation.
It does.
It opens the conversation, and that's a public process. Again, one of the things that I think is, is pretty important, Kate Stevenson from the Energy Committee had a post in Front Porch Forum today, I think. And she said, look, we have a net zero goal. And if you're, if you're going to set a goal and then hope to get to it, you're going to need to start taking some steps in that direction. And addressing the ability of, to create energy efficiency standards is one of the things that we need to start moving on if we're going to get there.
No, you're talking about municipal energy efficiency standards.
Well, and...
I think, and community.
And community, yeah. Privately owned property, developments, new developments.
So communications would be absolutely central when you're talking about people's own property.
Yeah. And that's something I know that the city's been working on, and I think things have improved exponentially, even in my time on the council. And I think in the world that we live in, it's a lot easier to get information out. It's just a matter for me of making sure that people are consuming that information. And I think a lot of that means that we're going to have to retool our approach to how we're, how we're talking about issues and how we're, you know, publicizing that these are the things that are, you know, that the council is taking up. And, you know, we've, we've asked for an opinion about sort of what an electronic message board could, could look like, you know, in conjunction with public meeting laws and things like that. Because I really do, I, like Richard said, you know, voting is literally the most important thing that you can do. And, you know, that's, that's one way, one way for us to sort of get the pulse of our community. You know, Jack and I and every other member of the council, we're engaged, you know, we hear from folks all the time. We do our best to keep up with emails, but there are so many some days. And, you know, it's really hard for us to, to keep up with all of that. And then, you know, on top of that, it's, it's trying to keep on top of what's next and how people are interacting with us. We got to be better about it.
So if this charter change were to be accepted by the voters, it would go onto the council's goals?
Well, we would, in order to...
We already have a goal of this net zero, achieving energy efficiency.
So this would be a ways to, to get to that goal.
If the legislature approves it, though. So it's not, it's, even if the voters vote yay...
And the legislature has to approve it because we're a charter town.
Correct. So any charter change for municipality has to go through the legislature. And, you know, that, it could be an uphill battle there. You know, it's never really a done deal, I think, until that, that last vote in the legislature's cast. You know, so, so this is the starting point. We are literally at like point A1 with having this on the, well, I would say A1 was getting, you know, the council to approve it and warning it on the ballot. Step two will be the election, step A2, and then, you know, we'll see where it goes from there.
But we already have some charter changes that have been passed by the voters that are waiting in the legislature. And, and there's some, some important, important things. We've got the plastic bag ban.
What about Berlin, Berlin Pond?
Nope, that was, that was not one of the...
Not on the list. But, but, but the other thing is the, is the non-citizen voting in municipal elections. And, and so the legislature is going to decide whether to approve those.
Now, after a false ending, out to the real ending, and say, thank you so much for watching this. Watch all the other ones. The one with Jim Murphy talking about the school budget is a very good show. The one with Ann Watson talking about the city budget. Every one of these is good. Get out on Town Meeting Day and do vote because your vote does mean something. But more, get into the habit of voting because that's the lifeblood of our democracy on every level. Thank you for watching.